Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Special Meeting of Council held April 4th, 2017. I have the approval of the agenda.
It's moved by Councillor Kylie and seconded by Councillor Barker. The council approves the agenda for its special meeting of April 4th, 2017 as presented.
All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared? Petitions and delegations? Ashley, you're gonna speak to the zoning application, number 19?
Yep. So I'm here to hold a public meeting at council for consideration of a zoning bylaw amendment at 50 Government Road West. The property is well-recognized in town. It's, right now it's home to lobbies in the basement, in the upper floor, and, sorry, main floor and upper floor are currently vacant. The applicant itself is trying to add residential on the main floor of the building. So being in a town center commercial designation, that's typically not permitted. That is why they are here today. Images of the building itself. So going through the planning considerations, just a brief summary of what we do as a planner, we go through the provincial policy statement and the Planning Act and Northern Ontario Growth Plan to try and find consistent policies that will allow us to do this type of conversion. So in terms of the provincial policy statement, "We shall promote economic development competitiveness by providing for appropriate mix and range of employment and institutional uses." I'm not gonna read through them, but typically they wanna see a diversified economic base. There are also provisions within here that state that we should be doing a comprehensive review when we're trying to change land from commercial to residential uses. And I'll get into that a little bit further in terms of my description of how we meet that policy. Planning authority shall provide for an appropriate range and mix of housing types and densities. So certainly, we would meet that requirement by allowing something like this to go through. So just to get into my little comments about the comprehensive review. The proposed amendment, the way that I have it figured out right now is instead of trying to rezone and redesignate the property to just allow residential to be the sole use of the property, I am intending to keep it as a commercial designation and a commercial zone, just allowing there to be residential on the main floor. So that continues, that means the lobbies will be continued as a commercial use. If the market changes and we see a new need for commercial, the owner of the property at that point can then convert it back to commercial. So you're not eliminating that commercial ability, you're just allowing another use to take place within that. The province is also very keen on supporting mixed-use developments in downtown cores, so that way you have like a live-work-play type of environment downtown. So we're certainly meeting those policies as well. In terms of our official plan, this was fun. This was the First Amendment that looked at our new official plan for policies. So I was excited to see how it would fit in there. We do have that reinstatement of a comprehensive review that the province would've seen it carry through to the OP. Again, like I said, I don't know if it's necessarily valid or required because we are still allowing the commercial use to continue. It's just at this time, we're meeting a need for residential and see that building be rehabilitated and used. Again, mixed-use development is encouraged within the commercial designation, so the purpose of mixed-use development is to provide an opportunity for live-work-play. The downtown is considered to be a mixed-use area with retail, service, residential office, cultural entertainment, institutional administrative functions. So again, that's meeting that policy without any issues. Council shall encourage wherever possible an increase in the residential units within and around the downtown through new development as a result of rehabilitation of upper stories and existing buildings. So again, our official plan is saying that's definitely something to encourage. My main thing was that the building on the main floor has sat vacant for several years by permitting residential on the main floor. We are not removing the owner's ability to convert the use to commercial at a later date. The need for residential apartments right now is greater, and we're still seeing lots of people come forward and put in large-scale new developments for residential purposes. This obviously can change in the future, so allowing that ability to change the zone or change that back to a commercial use is there if necessary. This is a rehabilitation of an underused building, which is something that is strongly encouraged within our OP. So in terms of the actual zone itself, like I said, we're just proposing to convert the main floor of the building to residential. The upper floor is not an issue. The property or the building itself sits on the legal boundaries of the property, and there are some things that they need to take into account, which I'll get into later in the actual, in the council meeting tonight. The encroachment agreement is coming forward for council's review for a fire escape and the location of their garbage bins in a small canopy on the main entrance into the building. That will, like I said, come back later on. The parking, we've already dealt with. So this zoning application was not considered a complete application until parking needs were met because downtown parking is an issue, and we don't want to encourage on-street winter parking. We had to make sure that there was 25 spaces that are in a nearby area in order to meet this requirement. So we did do that. That has been sent over for signature, so that's pretty much done. Typically with commercial properties downtown or other, we're required to go through a site plan control agreement. Because there's absolutely nothing but the building itself on this property, we already have a parking lease agreement established for the parking, or the parking side of things, and we're looking at doing an encroachment agreement. I feel like a site plan control agreement will be just a reinstatement of what we've already done, and it's an additional $1,500 fee, which I don't really wanna burden this individual or this corporation with because they've already put in money for the encroachment agreement, the lease agreement, the zoning bylaw. So I think we're pretty much, we're pretty good to say that the site plan control agreement is not necessary. The other thing that we wanted to mention was with discussions with Vic Burchenko, who's our Deputy Chief Building Official, there may be a requirement for a Phase 1 environmental assessment, and that's not something that's planning-related, that's something that's mandated underneath the building code, under the Other Applicable Law section. So the Environmental Protection Act actually has a statement that stipulates within it that any conversions of use from commercial or industrial to something more sensitive in nature needs to have that Phase 1 environmental assessment that will analyze whether or not any Phase 2 or rehabilitation needs to take place. In this instance, it's likely probably just a Phase 1. I did call a local company to see what that cost is. It's about $2,300 on their part to take on. Likely, it'll say there's no need for a Phase 2, and that'll be the end of it. Again, Vic will determine whether or not he thinks it needs to go through that process. I'm just putting it out there, so it's not a shock at a later date. So PAC, our Planning Advisory Committee, met last Thursday to discuss this application, and they did recommend the application be approved. So at this point, do you have any questions for me?
Councillor Morgan?
Yeah, I sit on the Planning Advisory Committee, and obvious, you know, by virtue, I've had a little more time to look at this. And, I mean, this is really, I think, an excellent, you know, repurposing of this building. As we've seen in so many cities around North America where, you know, they've seen decay in their downtown core, where the right revitalization has come from is moving people back downtown. And this is a perfect opportunity to do this. I mean, it's, you know, the first time that we've had this opportunity in Kirkland Lake, so I don't see anything but good that can come from this, having these people downtown. And there's family units in this building, and there's a large number of two-bedroom units. So this is excellent that we're gonna have, you know, families and individuals living in the downtown core, making it a little more bustling downtown, and potentially, you know, having some spinoff effects with some other smaller businesses downtown, so, you know, and helping our downtown core. So I can't see any negatives at all in doing this, so thank you very much.
Councillor Kylie?
Yes, Ashley, I might've missed it, but how many apartment units is it?
We didn't specify how many units it was because there is the ability to modify that. So I think the intent right now is 20 units in the building, but that can certainly be up and down based on what their parking requirements are. So they're going to go based on the market. So if somebody comes and says they want more three-bedrooms, they'll do more three-bedrooms and have less apartments in the building, but we certainly didn't wanna put a number on it. So long as they're meeting their parking requirements, we're not concerned about how many units are in there, so long, yeah, so long as they meet other.
I too agree with Councillor Morgan. I think it'll certainly help revitalize the downtown core. I would support this.
Mr. Councillor Mino?
Ashley, the building is quite old, but it could be converted into all the conforming sort of code requirements for fires and stuff like that.
Yes, councillor, the, they've actually met with our building department and myself a couple of times now. They do have the floor plans drawn, but the individual that's responsible for a building of this size, it needs to be signed off by architects, engineers, to be sure it meets code. So it kind of reduces the liability at our end for approving something of this magnitude. They do the review and they make sure that it's meeting all the requirements from health, fire.
And the, you were talking about the entrance is gonna be on Water Lane?
The entrance is actually on Market Street. So if you look at the floor plans, they're going to have three entrance, I guess one fire exit on Water Lane. The main entry, which is what we would know on Government Road, is not going to be likely the one that's used predominantly since the elevator is on the Market Street entrance.
So there will be a parking or a traffic issue with Market Street there, given that we already have lobbies?
That did come up with our Planning Advisory Committee, and again, it was raised as an issue, but I'm not sure how to resolve it. We thought, one of the members of our Planning Advisory Committee suggested that we perhaps remove parking on Market Street entirely so that there's no congestion, but then, I'm not sure lobbies would be too impressed with the fact that there's, the Market Street parking is gone.
Is the parquet part of that parcel?
No, it's ours.
Okay, 'cause there's a wall there, and so it stops cars from, you know, if they had that sort of loop in, might be better for residential.
Yeah, and we've had discussions with the individual who owns this property that the municipality may be interested in selling that at a later date to accommodate them if they need it. I also thought it'd be a great place for barbecue.
Well, for the residents, for sure, they have their front yard, I guess.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, Councillor Barker?
I'm very excited about this project, and I fully support all the comments around the table and support this project, so, thank you.
Yeah, it's a good, you know, certainly, I'm excited to see something happening with the old, I guess it's the old Eaton's building when I was a kid, but I'm also happy to see, I know when we developed the official plan, we wanted something that was flexible and something that we could mold into the challenges that we're facing, and certainly, the first test shows that it's working. I know there used to be parking there years ago, but now people from lobbies park there, really no issue. I'm just not sure if there would be an issue if, say, people overnight parked there. That might be something that we can look at, but it's not, it's not really an issue today. But, yeah, I'm extremely excited to see this, and I think it'll meet the need of a lot of our senior residents that have small homes or homes that, you know, they're having a difficult time looking after it themselves and were looking for a good place to go. So this might open up some avenues for that as well, to meet that need. So, yeah, I'm very supportive of this as well. Is there any, this is an open special meeting tonight, so anybody from the audience can speak if they want to. We certainly, no, okay?
It's moved by Councillor Barker and seconded by Councillor Kylie. The council directs the town planner to proceed with zoning application number 19 affecting the property at 50 Government Road West.
All in favor? Thank you, and thank you, Ashley.
It's moved by Councillor Barker, seconded by Councillor Kylie. The council adjourns its special meeting to a regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Thank you. Good evening again, and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held April 4th, 2017. Before the meeting starts, there is a notice to be read. First of all, council will hold a public meeting on April the 18th to consider a rezoning application at 145 Government Road West. And at its meeting of, at its regular meeting of April the 18th, council will consider a bylaw related to the sale of mining claims HR 597, 599, and part of mining claim HR 598, L 7583, and L 2637, and that's property along Highway 112. And we'll start this meeting with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda.
It's moved by Councillor Kylie and seconded by Councillor Barker. The council approves its agenda for the regular meeting of April 4th, 2017 as presented.
All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Councillor Kylie?
Yes, item 6A, request to amend parking bylaw, accessible space. That was my brother-in-law's request, so I'll step out when that comes up. 638.
Okay, thank you. Petitions and delegations? See none? Acceptance of the minutes?
It's moved by Councillor Barker and seconded by Councillor Kylie. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Kirkland Lake Public Library held February 16th, 2017. The finance meeting held March 28th, 2017, and the regular meeting of council held March 20th, 2017.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications? We have a report 6-1 from the treasurer.
We had discussed earlier in our purchasing and procurement policy that I would bring back the suppliers that are greater than $75,000 after we had closed off our year-end for 2016. So we've closed off all of our payables and provided that list for you. I didn't know if there was any questions on it, and we also, it was just for information purposes, and there's also a clause in there that I had to certify whether the contracts that we were awarded above $25,000 were in compliance with our policy, and they all are, so.
Any question? Okay, there's a resolution.
It's moved by Councillor Kylie and seconded by Councillor Barker. The council accepts the report by the treasurer, listing suppliers with a cumulative total of $75,000 or more in a calendar year, as set out in Section 4.14-2 of the town's procurement policy.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, 6-2?
Okay, this is administrative changes that come along with the retirement of the CAO. There are some designations that come with the position of CAO, and so now that our CAO has left, is retiring as of April 30th, it's time that we need to bring these bylaws back and redesignate them or to repeal them. So last week, we did, we brought forward to the community Emergency Management Coordinator, and Wilf Haas has been appointed. This was as per the Emergency Management Ontario. And today, we're bringing two other bylaws, the one for Transport Canada, designating the accountable executive for the airport, and also removing Nancy Alec as deputy clerk. So those ones we'll bring forward today.
Councillor Morgan?
Yeah, since we're doing this tonight, I'm just wondering if we can't formalize the senior management team that we've put in place for, until we appoint a new CAO. We, I know that it's in place till the end of April, but why don't we put it in place now? Because we obviously won't have a new CAO in place by the end of April, so can we just, would it be possible to put that in place this evening, Joanne? I mean, it's, because if we don't by the end of April, it's gonna fall away, right?
It does need to be done. As of April 30th, you do not have a CAO. All of the Ministry Municipal Affairs, I have been in contact with them. If you do not appoint an interim CAO or you do not appoint an interim senior management team, then the duties fall back to your two-appointed positions, which are your clerk and your treasurer. So yes, if this is what you would like to do, and even today, we could pass a bylaw that if this is what you wanna do today, and you could wait until the 30th, it's your choice.
I'd like to just get it done now and get all the housekeeping done at once, if council will entertain that. I'd like to move that we do that.
Councillor Roman?
Yeah, no, I'd certainly be in favor of that. I'll second it.
Yeah, it's something that, sorry, Councillor Mino?
Just discussion, this is, this is sort of interim basis, and it's also dealing with the present structure that's been actually proposed, and all people are very conscious of this now, I'm assuming.
My understanding is that it was, I was not at the in-camera meeting that this was discussed at, but it was that you would set it up with the two directors, the Director of Corporate Services, or Director of Community Services, Director of Economic Development, your clerk and your treasurer.
So everybody's on board, or at least everybody's been notified, to my...
Well, exactly, and this is a good opportunity to make this public as well, so that, you know, everybody knows what the management structure is in the interim until we appoint the new CAO, so, kinda killing two birds with one stone.
Something that we have to do either tonight or next, so we'll get it.
Yeah, so let's get her done while we're doing everything else.
Is that part of the bylaw, or is that...
I would write up a bylaw for it.
So this'll come back as a bylaw at the end of the meeting? Okay? Is there anything else?
No, because all of my stuff is coming back as bylaws. There are a couple of other things that we will have to bring forward. That's our signing policy. Nancy Alec is a bank signatory for the town, and we will bring back to you the policy suggesting somebody else go on that.
Okay, item 6-3. Ashley, I think you're back up here.
Hello again. Okay, so my first report is to put a request forward to amend the traffic and parking bylaw, which is by introducing an accessible parking space on Government Road West. It ends up becoming right in front of the bowling alley, just to give you a general idea of where it sits right now. When we originally did our parking bylaw in 2014, this spot that they're looking at right now was a loading zone. The loading zone was removed as part of that parking bylaw, and the reason it was removed was because a lot of the business owners in that area felt that they needed additional parking spaces. So by removing the loading zone, I think we ended up getting two additional parking spaces. As part of that, right across the street on the south side of Government Road, there was an accessible parking space that was moved, instead of being directly in front of Dino's, pushed over more towards community, or community living, yeah, in order to accommodate their needs. At the time, the bylaw enforcement officer did specify that there would be a benefit to having that parking spot relocated to the north side of the street, so where that, where they are requesting it to be, mostly to accommodate the dental office, because if you're thinking of someone with accessibility issues on the south side of the street trying to get to the dental clinic, there really is only one way, you'd have to cross the road and go in off the other side. There's only stairs on the one, so parking definitely becomes limited in that area. So this request definitely makes sense from our perspective. It is something that we did go and take a look and actually try to maneuver what we'd have to do if we were someone with accessibility concerns. Having two parking spaces, two accessible parking spaces there, I think will be okay. And I don't, I don't see it as a disadvantage at all, so I'll leave that for council's consideration, and if they have any questions, I'm free.
Councillor Roman?
I'm just trying to visualize which parking spot this is. I know there's one in front of the vacant building, I think, is it 62 Government Road West? Because a parking spot right in front of the bowling alley, I think, would be a traffic.
No, it's further tucked in, just give me a second, I'll pull it up.
But there is an existing one, so it's more where Hogarth's paint shop kinda used to be, you know?
I'm not, I'm fixier, so...
It's an existing parking spot?
Yeah, it is an existing parking space. So you would be eliminating one parking space to put a new one in, and the reason why, we did eliminate an additional parking space that was closer to Main Street intersection, sorry, Kirkland Street intersection, but we had to move it back because it didn't meet our requirements for being 20 meters away from the intersection. So there is...
This parking spot that you're talking about, is it west of the lane, between Franklin and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Or east of the lane.
It's east of the lane?
I believe so. Just give me, I wanna look it up.
The wall starts right at the lane, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gotta be west.
It'd be just on the east of the lane is where the wall starts.
No parking. I'm almost, geez.
I'm thinking it's gotta be almost west of the lane for it to work.
That's an existing spot.
Yeah, I believe...
But that's not in front of the bowling alley. If she's saying they wanna put one in front of the bowling alley.
Yeah, just to be sure. Yeah, no, I'm gonna pull it up. It's easy to do. So there's that old loading zone. Keep in mind that this information, yeah, so it's definitely, it's not in, it's not west. You're taking from the Franklin, right in front of the Franklin. That's where the accessible parking space would be located.
There was one right under that candid play at the parking spot there, already under the bowling alley.
No, those lines were removed because it's way too close to the intersection, and it caused a traffic and safety concern. So that one has been removed. So I was right, it is east of the, yeah. Yeah, so it's not in front of the bowling alley, but we wouldn't put one in the intersection. So...
I agree.
Yeah.
Clarify, the one across the street in front of Dino's is being moved?
It was moved already, so it was...
Down to...
Community living.
Market Street, sorry.
Yeah, so it used to be where this truck used, is, and now it's closer to community living.
We just moved it up.
We moved it up a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Just because, again, we weren't meeting that distance requirement in our parking bylaw.
Like, I would find pictures like that in our reports so helpful...
Sure.
For any, any sort of planning issue or parking issue, it really clears it up. But, yeah, I'm gonna agree with... Thanks.
So Ashley, just for the sake, could you just rotate that again to the other side?
Yes, of course.
And just point with your arrow where this parking, where this...
So pretty much where that loading zone sign is, so it's going to be, it can't be where the laneway starts, it's gotta be 1.5 from the laneway.
So we're gonna remove the walls?
Nope, we're not removing the walls, we're just going to put in and paint this section here as an accessible parking space, and then there'll be one more regular parking space here.
How would someone get out of their van with a wheelchair on the...
The same way they do it on the other side, right? They would get out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, like, there's a wall there, though, I'm just, I'm just confused.
Oh.
Like, how are you gonna get, and then what do they do? How do they get over the wall, I guess is my question.
Well, not everybody is going to park there that has a wheelchair. I'm just...
No, but I'm saying, what if somebody does park there that it's a wheelchair?
That has a wheelchair, yeah.
I mean, like, we would have to remove that, that lower wall.
It's a good question. I didn't take into that, I circulated roads on this as well.
Because chances are, somebody's not gonna park there and then jump out of their car and walk around.
Well, yeah.
I'm thinking...
If I may, a temporary solution is to pull into the laneway where it does dip, get out and then back the vehicle up, if, as a temporary solution, but we may want to look at a more permanent solution.
Because, and because there's that elevation difference, I'm not sure what the rules would be to take out that wall. Like, I think you may need that wall as a protection in case people end up falling.
Yeah, like, wouldn't, like, if we went west of the laneway? Just to that, right in front of that house, or right in front of that...
Right here. So the reason we originally took that one out was because, like I said, you're right by the intersection. Like, the intersection's right here, and it was, like, we could certainly look at putting something there if you're interested, but again, we did remove that space because you're supposed to be 20 meters from that intersection, so 60 feet.
Like, for me, it would make, it makes more sense to try to do that than, I just don't know how we can overcome the wall.
Yeah, that's fair.
And somebody in a...
I didn't even think of that.
In a walker. So what does that mean?
The benefit is that you wouldn't be losing an additional parking space, you'd just be creating a new one. And the other benefit is that it's not going to be used all the time, so it's not a, like, it's not an ongoing issue, so...
So, to put it here, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
To put it here, it gives, uh, it gives, uh, people that are handicapped, uh, easy access to the dental office, which is a great point, because, uh, that's the only way they can get up there.
Yeah.
Um, and it would be, uh, it's relatively flat.
Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely good grounds for that. If you're going further the other way, oops, I went too far. Again, you have those stairs going up the other way with that slope. It's extremely difficult to...
It's impossible, isn't it, to get up?
Yeah, and the stairs are the only way on the sidewalk.
I, I just don't see it done with the wall. That's...
No, that's a fair argument.
You know, uh, e- even if you, yeah, because you want to get out of the...
Well, you'd be a pass, if you're a passenger, I guess that's where the problem would be, right? Because the driver would be getting off into traffic, but that's typical, just by the way of driving.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, say, someone from, uh, the Tech Pioneer wanting to bring a resident to see the dentist. Uh, they come down in their wheelchair, uh, they park, and they get out and they go to the dentist. Uh, it would be much easier to accomplish that act in front of the, um, that bird place.
That's...
Um, I just want to get council's thoughts on that. Um... Uh, sorry, Counselor Roman?
Yeah, I can certainly, I, I have to agree with you, you know? Not having a, having a better look at it, I, I have to agree with you. That parking spot in front of Hogarth's, under the flag, has been there forever, and that, if, if it's a handicap parking spot, it may not be, you know, that much of a hindrance to traffic if it's not occupied all the time. So, yeah, I'll...
I could support it there.
Could you just back that red truck up again? You, you know how you had it?
Yeah, just back up line and then flip it around.
Oh, it's, that's good. Like, if someone's parked, if someone is here, and the lane is green light and you want to turn left, then of course, that's, it eliminates that, but that's not really, uh, too late, road anyways. Uh, you know, for the six seconds, people might have to wait, or the, the one out of every five hundred lights, maybe that someone decides to turn left and someone behind them. I, I think it would be a less, uh, I would recommend, like, in front of that, like where Counselor Roman says, where that, those lines are there now, if that's possible.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Mino?
Actually, that would be a designated handicap space? Is that a larger...
Yes.
...than the regular parking?
It is.
So, it's going to go a little closer to the, uh, intersection there?
Yes, and even the line painting, this would be, I'm thinking it says September two thousand nine on the Street View map, so those parking spots are not, uh, the same size as they are today. They are a little bit larger to accommodate our Northern Ontario truck population.
So, the bigger than that?
They are, yeah. Our main, our standard, um, parking for our parallel parking spaces are larger than they were previously, and that's something we modified in our parking bylaw. Uh, but, yeah, we also, uh, the accessible would be even, even larger than that.
Yeah, that's good, like, with Mayor Tony, as you're saying, people turning left, usually they hug the, the yellow line, and then cars go around. So, there's a pot, potential for a little hook up there.
Mm-hmm, and we, we do typically try to stay, uh, five or six feet, I believe it is, from a laneway also. So, I mean, it, putting it here is going to, in terms of a legality in the bylaw, the wording that goes invol, goes into it, is, it's going to be a little tricky. Like I said, we're supposed to be twenty meters from a streetlight and five meters from a laneway. That's why it was eliminated, because there's no way we could have met a full parking spot there. Uh, but I mean, I mean, putting one in and putting that exemption is just a matter of amending the schedule, and we do have a provision within our parking bylaw that says, uh, so the parking, um, schedules would take precedence over the wording of the bylaw. So, it's not an issue. It's entirely, uh, whatever works best for council.
It just seems the most reasonable spot of the two. That's, that's, you know, I mean, the other way, I guess, we didn't want to create a bottleneck, and, and I don't think many people turn left there, but we could put a, advance in green, and everybody would exit right away. But I, I, I don't think it would be worth, uh, because of the traffic, but it would just seem to make more.
I have a motion moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie, that the town planner proceed with amending the traffic and parking bylaw by placing an accessible parking spot on the north side of Government Road, west of the laneway at sixty-four Government Road West, and bring a bylaw back for consideration to a future meeting.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Can I just make a comment? Ashley, maybe I didn't make it clear when I brought this request to you. I did not think it was going to be in front of the Franklin. I thought it was one of these two spots where the Tool Depot was in the Frank...
Okay.
Uh, I, I have to agree with Mayor Tony and the others that, that the wall is going to be an issue.
Okay, well, that's good that we changed it then.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so Ashley, you're still on, uh, part B. I guess you'll start.
Part B. Yes, so the, the authority to sign the maintenance dig agreements with Union Gas, there's, uh, two agreements that are proposed, uh, at council tonight for, um, them to dig in and install a four-inch pipe, uh, behind the Ford, I guess is probably the best way to explain it, and then south of, or, or, sorry, I guess, south and north of Archer Drive, right, uh, right south of Chappie. Uh, the eas, or the easements that they have currently in place is not meeting their, their needs. They need to go above and beyond and take up a little bit more of our land just to get in there and, and get their proper angle of repose to get in and dig and do the work. They are anticipating that it'll take a couple months, and as a result, they're intending to compensate us sixty-five hundred dollars per agreement, and the way they calculated that was two thousand per claim that they were on, and it was three claims for each agreement. So, six thousand dollars plus a five hundred dollar administration fee for both is thirteen thousand.
Sound like a normal fee that they would?
Yeah, and they, they, they typically have the numbers already predetermined at their end and how they work with those, and...
And, Ashley, will this interfere in any opera, any businesses operating, uh, businesses?
Not.
The ones that will be close to the digging, they understand what's going to be taking place?
Yep, they'll have to provide notice if it's going to affect anything, but there, it's all entirely on our claims, so there shouldn't be any direct issues with the operations of the, the businesses in this area.
Okay, any, any question, any other questions, concerns? Okay, and that'll come back as a bylaw at the end. Okay, and number C.
Okay, the request to encroach at fifty Government Road West, this is the encroachment agreement that I said was coming back in the public meeting. Uh, again, it's probably, I'm not sure logically whether or not we can pass a, we'll pass the bylaw after, right? Okay. So, this encroachment agreement, like I had mentioned, is for the fire exit at the rear of the building to be compliant with the building code. Uh, also required for the garbage to be placed and picked up at curbside, so that's proposed to be located in the back of the building, and to install a ca, a canopy over the entrance off of Market Street. So, I did provide, um, I do have a drawing here that shows the actual encroachment. If anybody, I'm not sure if it was, did I grab the right one? This is the lease, the encroachment's in my other bag. Um, but yeah, it's, it's basically just a small, um, fire exit in the rear. Uh, we did, um, our Public Works did raise some concerns, uh, with the, the easement happen, or the, the encroachment happening onto our la, our property on Water Lane, only because the water service from fifty Government Road West, uh, L's off and goes to the property to the west, so it's right hugged tight towards the building. So, encroaching anything into that Water Lane area would affect that. So, the way around it, the architect actually came back and proposed a canilever, the fire exit, and the stairs can be removed if there was any need for us to get in there quickly, and the garbage bins were all going to be movable. So, it shouldn't cause any issues, and as part of it as well, they just figured they'd put a canopy on the Market Street one to prevent snow from building up near the road, or, sorry, by the entrance. Is there any questions on this one?
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Barker, that the town planner proceed with bringing forward an encroachment agreement for fifty Government Road West and bring, uh, forward to a future meeting.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
And the last item that I need to bring to your attention is a recent communication between ExploreNet. Uh, their intent is to install a broadband tower, and this is on the Northern Freedom property where the storage containers or storage sheds are, are located. Uh, it is a forty-three meter tower, and it is federally regulated, so they are mandated to circulate to people within, it's three times the distance of the, of the height of the tower, so forty-three times three on the ground, and we did, uh, we did assist them in the circulation because that is private information, the addresses and stuff, and what, so we, they ended up sending us post-dated envelopes with the notices that they wanted. We put the addresses on it and sent it out. There was no concerns raised, uh, and at this point, they're asking for the municipality to write a letter specifying that we are not concerned and that they did go through that public process, and, uh, we, we also have asked them to proceed with a site plan control agreement at our end to properly grasp the tower with the storage bins and the drainage on the property, so...
So, just what I understand, this is on Northern Freedom's property?
It's, it's not Northern Freedom's property, but it's the same, yeah, it's just where the storage, because that's not really Northern Freedom. It's, it's John's personal property, but...
Okay, but there's no issue there, uh, with, with the owner?
No, uh, no, that's all been approved.
That would be my concern.
Yeah, no, that's all been approved.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Mino?
Ashley, just concerned with the safety aspect of that tower. It's kind of tempting to climb if you're in the neighborhood.
No, it'll be properly fenced.
So, there, there would be some security tied into all this, and that's, that's a site plan, or is that?
No, that's their federally regulated requirements. They would have to get proper, uh, proper fencing to make sure no one's climbing it.
Okay.
And there would need to be lights on it, mm?
That's, yeah, all from airport standpoint, and I did, I did contact our, our airport as well, and I just asked them whether there was something that we needed to be concerned about. It's not because it's so far away from the airport, but, yeah, if it was closer to, there would be concerns.
Okay. Counselor Morgan?
Just curiosity, Ashley, what, what's the purpose of the tower? I don't, uh, it seems like an odd place for rural...
Yeah, it's, uh, just, they didn't really give me much information in terms of what they're using it for. Um, I'm assuming, based on the correspondence that they provided, it was Rogers that I think is, I don't know for sure, though. It's, it's just based on my observing of what they've sent as templates for letters. It's a Rogers Communication Tower is what I'm noticing, so...
Okay, uh, we have a resolution for that.
It's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council approves a letter of concurrence be written to ExploreNet Broadband from the town of Kirkland Lake for the proposed tower east of twenty Archer Drive.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, the introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
Okay. It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw seventeen dash zero three four, being a bylaw to rezone fifty Government Road West, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you.
That bylaws, uh, moved by, uh, Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Kylie, that bylaw seventeen dash zero three five, being a bylaw to appoint clerk and deputy clerks, removing Nancy Alec as a deputy clerk, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw seventeen dash zero three six, being a bylaw to appoint W. Haas as the accountable executor for K L Airport, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Kylie, that bylaw seventeen dash zero three eight, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute two maintenance dig agreements with Union Gas, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Roman, that bylaw seventeen dash zero three nine, being a bylaw to repeal bylaw oh five dash zero three five, a bylaw to appoint a C A O, and appoint an interim senior management team to report to council. The senior management team will consist of Director of Economic Development and Tourism, Wilford Haas, Director of Community Services, Bonnie Sackrider, Treasurer, Jennifer Elder, Clerk Joanne Ducharme, and that this bylaw is effective on the day of its passing.
All in favor? Thank you. Uh, notices of motion? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw seventeen dash zero three seven, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held April fourth, two thousand seventeen, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you. Counselors' reports? Yes, Counselor Barker?
Earlier, we passed the, uh, we accepted the minutes of the Kirkland Lake Public Library, and in them, there was a, uh, acknowledgement of a donation made by K L Gold, that just for, uh, community's knowledge, K L Gold did donate fifteen hundred dollars towards a new furnace, so a big thank you from the library board for the, uh, for the donation from K L Gold. Very generous.
Very generous. Counselor Mino?
Yeah, just an update on the, uh, the replacing of the C A O. Uh, the ad has gone out today. Uh, some of yous might have seen it. It's on the social media, uh, of the towns of Kirkland Lake, website, Twitter, and Facebook. Also, we're going to, uh, publicize that fact to the Far Northeastern Training Board, which is a new website that has only jobs for the North, and so that's a proper one to, to, to entertain. Uh, it'll be in the Northern News as of, uh, tomorrow and also on Friday, and also, we're going with the A M O, which is the Association Municipalities of Ontario, and the A M C T O, which is Association Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario. Those are the, you know, those are the designated websites for all the job applicants who are looking in this field. So, that's been done. Uh, the closing date will be April twenty-fourth, and, and after that time, uh, we will entertain a shortlist if, if need be, and, uh, we'll go from there. Uh, the committee has targeted May fifteenth to the nineteenth week as interview processing. So, uh, those are just targeted right now, uh, and then we would actually, uh, perhaps entertain, uh, filling that position as you said this morning on the media, perhaps midsummer or September, as I had proposed in the beginning. So, that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
And my second thing is, uh, just, just for Ashley's, uh, purpose, um, some time ago, I had asked, uh, for, uh, Mark Williams to look into widening the street, which is Al Wendy, and it's because a little bit of traffic congestion is only like a one-lane or to get out of there, to go into Government Road or to, when people turn left, and I just wanted just to put it back to you in terms of perhaps following up on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just this past Friday, I, uh, attended on behalf of the town, uh, the Diamond Driller's Assistant Common Core Program graduation at the college, and there was nine graduates. I, I believe, uh, the majority of them have already found work. Um, and I think the, uh, another course, uh, is, uh, going to be starting in May, so it's a real popular, uh, course, this, uh, diamond drilling, and, uh, there's certainly a demand for it in the, uh, in, in the, um, in the workplace, so I just wanted to congratulate them. Um, other than that, I have to adjourn.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Barker. The council adjourned its regular meeting of April fourth, two thousand seventeen, to an in-camera meeting to discuss upcoming new negotiations, one lawsuit update, and two personal issues involving municipal and local employees.
All in favor? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.